Ladies and gentlemen, it is 3:00 PM on Thursday, October 15th, 2015. Time for the meeting of the Gateway Residence Community Development District Board of Supervisors meeting. We have a quorum. Please stand and join us in the pledge to our flag and country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. I am delighted to see so many residents here this afternoon. And I'd like to, I'd like to start off with you showing me with a show of your hands whether you're here to talk about the swimming pool. Would you please raise your hands? All right, put them down. Would you raise your hands, those who are here not to talk about the swimming pool? All right.
Why don't we get the knots first?
I think the easiest way to proceed on this item is for, for me to ask the board members for a straw vote indicating which of the members are indicated and interested in making any kind of changes to the regulations regarding the pool. So, having said that, board members who are not interested in making any changes to the regulations involving the pool, please raise your hand so we can...
I'm not sure what all the regulations are, quite honestly.
Well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna change them right now because there's a majority of the vote of the board who's not interested in making any of the changes. So, your mere presence today has resulted in the board deciding by a majority that they're not interested in talking about listening or making any changes in the rules regarding the swimming pool. Now, if you want to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, you are very welcome to Mr. Senior, if you still want to come. Please, please have some order in here. If you want to leave now because your purpose has been accomplished, please feel free to get up and leave. If not, you're very welcome to stay and enjoy a very delightful meeting.
I think that's a consensus vote, too.
Good way to clear out the mess.
We're all heading to the pool.
Excellent.
That's great.
We have a lot of people who want to talk about these things.
They do, too. They do back of the tent.
We're gonna be talking about the times. And so that makes the rules, if I may.
So, have this movie taken on it? Yeah. Jones, Scott, and the period.
No. Okay. She was just making the talk, man.
We're just joking for a second.
Just coming, just confirming for the time.
So, what topics, who's signed in? Who's signed in for all the rest, for all the rest of these people here? Cal has shared.
We're gonna find out pretty quick. Cal, where's Cal? Something else is cooking here. Now, what else is, what else is on your agenda?
A loading service.
Oh, I've got, there might only be one, but I don't know if these people are still here. So, why don't I go through and if they're not here, just, I put all the pool-related ones up front.
Okay, before you do that, I, I have told Mr. Senior that he can have two minutes to describe what his intentions were as far as the pools concerned. So, we're gonna listen to Mr. Senior now. Ladies and gentlemen, please come to order. The, the board has to continue its business. The chair has, is gonna recognize Mr. Senior for two minutes to tell you a little more about his proposal at the last board meeting regarding the pool. Mr. Senior?
Good afternoon, fellow residents. I'm Rod Senior. I was elected last November to this board. The three main platforms I was elected for was to try and do something to improve our landscaping, and do something to improve our ponds or lakes, and thirdly, to try and contain costs. And that's what I'm trying to do. As far as the pool is concerned, I want to explain myself. We have, we have a situation at the Gateway Commons Pool where our annual expenditure is climbing each year. In 2015, it cost $195,000 in operating costs to maintain that pool, which is primarily staff, chemicals, and propane heating. And in the budget for 2016, that $195,000 is gonna climb to $230,000. And I'm trying to help the district to do what it can to contain those costs. And there are three options in circulation at the moment. One option is to try and offset the cost of propane by converting to solar heating or geothermal, which I'm helping the staff to evaluate, and it's still under evaluation. If we go with solar, we may be able to get that $60,000 down to perhaps $15,000 or $20,000. That would be a great project. Second item would be to try and reduce the number of operating hours if there is a desire to do so, meaning either reduce the operating hours or close the pool down for a certain number of months a year. And the third option is to introduce user fees for non-residents using the pool and possibly for residents. Now, I wanna say this to you all. I'm, I'm a very resident-oriented person, a resident-centric person. I was, I was in your chair in 2007 when with this board at the time was trying to impose a $7 million park on us. Those who were around in 2007 will remember, will remember that that was a very emotional situation. The board wasn't in the mood for asking the residents for a vote at that time, which I think was part of the problem. What I've done in the past 14 days since I raised this subject of user fees, I've, I've gone out to my community, which is Gateway Greens, with a digital survey. Because I listen to people, and I've, and it was an eight-question digital survey monkey which went out through Gateway Greens Community Association, which is about 660 or 700 people on that email list, and I've had 242 responses. So that I can at least give some guidance to the board as to what, if, if that's a litmus test, the results of that survey, I'm assuming that's, that might represent the greater community. The three key results of that survey I've received this last two weeks is that 50% of the respondents are not in favor of a resident user fee. 45% are in favor of some kind of a user fee. So, we've, it's slightly tipped in favor of no user fee. 66% of residents responding are in favor of non-resident user fee. Now, the whole idea of this is not to generate some income and go and advertise the fact that our pool is open to the public. It's quite the opposite. Well, my idea was is to introduce a user fee for non-residents to discourage them. Because I think the majority of responses I've received is that people want this as a Gateway-only pool for those who are paying for it. And that's without a fee for the residents who are using it. And the last point is that there was a suggestion on the board two weeks ago, which was just a suggestion at the time that we'd close the pool down for part of the year. The majority of people aren't interested in that. It's a Gateway asset. We've all paid for it. It was built in 1994 for $360,000. And people regard it as an enhancement to real estate values, and that's, and I respect that opinion, and I'll, I'll stand by that, what the residents want.
Thank you very much, Rod. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now gonna proceed to our regular agenda. Mr. Manager, do we have folks to talk about the agenda items?
Um, it looks, some haven't really identified. There's one definite agenda item in the...
Well, let's talk, let's listen to that person then.
Okay, that's Mr. Ed Tinkle, and he wanted to talk about item 6B.
Thanks. For the record, Ed Tinkle, Ben Pine Drive. 6B is the pond report that Danny's gonna be doing later, so I just assumed deferred on that one. But I had two other items. Want me to get those right now? They're fast, they're fast. One, on 6B, we're gonna be talking about the ponds and erosion, but we're not gonna be talking water quality. Our committee is working on that, and we would like to take, I have a stranger here, have a reservation for your October 29th meeting, two weeks from today, I believe, and have time allotted for...
No, there's no 29th.
No, I guess we didn't have, okay. When is it? What day?
November 5th, I believe.
Okay, whatever. Next meeting. And have time reserved for a discussion on the water quality side of our ponds. We're gonna have some recommendations. Hopefully even maybe possible a final version of the pond maintenance standards. So, we'd like to talk about that at that time and not bog down today's discussion. Second thing is, just to indicate, representing Gateway Greens Community Association, HOA, we are converting over slowly but surely to LED lights, and we would like to have the CDD, since you have all the lights on the main drag on Gateway Greens Drive and Westling's Drive, to consider that the CDD, at least in Gateway, consider switching over to LED also and maybe doing a cost analysis. We're of the opinion it's big-time cost savings, but if you could have staff do that.
Scott, will you please put that on your list of things to...
Otherwise, I'll wait till Danny's deal and help him on that.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. This would be Mary A. Basilian. I live 11773 Mahogany Run.
You're gonna have to spell that last for me. I apologize.
No, I'm used to it. B is in boy, I is in Ida, double S is in Sam, A is in apple, I for Ida, double L for Lawrence, O for Otto, N for Nellie. I'm a supervisor and directory assistant. Anyway, I've been taking notes, Rod, since you've been talking, and I really don't understand why it's costing so much. Let me ask you a question. Do you bid out all these things when you talk about propane or you're talking about another type of gas? Do you bid all this stuff out? Because I don't come to the meeting, so I don't know these things. When you're trying to, you're trying to save money. I understand that. But...
The question is, do we bid on propane?
Do you bid on, when you bid anything out? Do you bid everything out?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna try and get the best price?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, that's wonderful. Okay, but why do you want riffraff in here? Tell me.
No, ma'am, we, we have already made a decision on the pool.
No, I understand that. I understand that. But just the possibility that this could happen, that's pretty frightening. Yeah, I'm a widow. I'm, I'm alone in my house.
We have already made that decision tonight. If you have other items, please continue.
No, no, I don't.
But we don't wanna, we're not gonna discuss that anymore.
All right. No, that's fine. It's just, I, as I say, this first time I've come here, and I still would like, I still, you know, would like to feel that we all have a part in this. Hey, everybody else doesn't get up, I do, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager?
Okay, Nancy Norcia. Okay, all of the rest have written down the pool.
Okay, we've made our decision. No, we don't, we're not gonna listen to anymore on that.
Could, could I, could we get the decision again? We were all off their stuff. They couldn't come in, they were in no room. There's 30 people with them out there. I'm just wondering what you guys decided in our analysis.
The board, by show hands of a majority, decided that they were not interested in making any adjustments to the terms and rules during, under which the pool is operated. Were you satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
I thought I missed something big.
Some people thought it was...
I feel better now.
Do we have any other folks to talk on the...
No, sir.
All right. Let's go ahead then to item 3, the discussion item on the Aquagenics contract follow-up. That was in our agenda.
Yes, sir.
And you want to review it with us? Are you gonna assume that we read it, which I hope we all did?
I assume everybody read it, but I think there's a real good summary of the issues and the resolution to those. It's, we're still working with Aquagenics, trying to come up with a, an agreeable solution, and hopefully we might see some contract reductions, possibly as an offset against any littoral plannings where they are proposed or not proposed. And that's, there's a summary of, of the action taken. We had a meeting, Scott, L, Molly, myself, with the Aquagenics, and we went through all of the issues that we'd identified as contract violations, and the results, as I said, are summarized on that October 7th summary.
Thank you very much. Members have any questions for...
Well, just for clarification, we've stated a generality, but the big thing as far as any money's back is the silt accumulation. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And on page 7 in the agenda, it talks about it twice. What kind of money are we talking about here?
Uh, we, we have no idea. We're waiting for them to come back with a recommendation, and then we'll sit down and see if we feel it's, it's...
We didn't have the amount?
No, it wasn't broken down in the contract.
Was not? Okay. Okay. Any estimate?
No.
Enough guesses?
No.
Not, I didn't even want.
No.
How come it wasn't broken down?
Because...
I didn't ask you. No, you don't have to take this one. You, let them have it.
I...
Thank you.
Are you asking me?
Sure.
I have no idea. I'm not sure anybody that's on staff now, other than L, was involved in it.
Tony, got any wild...
I have to look at the contract. I think there were various items and scope of work and dollars associated with various work items.
There were with some of them, but I don't recall it in the...
Not with silt accumulation? Because I thought that was a big hit.
I don't, I don't tell. I don't think that was broken down.
I read the contract totally different. I don't see a requirement for removing silt. I see a, a camera or a clause for photographing it but not removing it. Aquagenics doesn't have the facilities to do that. Thank you guys for reading the contract wrong.
No.
Okay. Rod?
Yes, thank you. I, I, first of all, want to ask about trash and litter pickup, which is on, this again, we're on page 7, Cal.
Yes.
This, this is gonna include additional manpower, it says?
For...
For trash and litter pickup and removal.
Well, they say they're doing it now, but doesn't look like they are.
Yeah, it says that it's gonna include additional manpower. I'm just wondering whether that means they're gonna, there's gonna be a change of it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, we're, we're not proposing anything but a reduction in the prices of this contract.
Okay, thanks. The other point is relevant to Gary's comment, was the photographic...
Yes.
The requirement, which is the original reason I asked you to look at 302 in the contract, was that they're not doing this photographic documentation as the contract says. And in fact, they're doing these ride-alongs in place. I don't understand why that decision was made, that ride-alongs would be okay.
That, according to Aquagenics, that was an agreement with Gatos, who was the third-party contractor that was referenced in the contract. And that was a, we have not been able to confirm with Gatos that they gave them any type of permission to do that.
Okay. So, does that mean we're going back to the terms of the contract and going back to photograph? Or we're gonna carry on the ride-along?
Well, we think that the ride-along's more effective, but if, I guess we're open, if that's something, I, I'm just not sure I see the value of that.
Of the photos?
Of the photos, yeah. It's before and after, unless they have a timestamp on the, you know, it's just, it's, it's difficult to manage.
So, does that mean the contract's gonna be amended to say ride-alongs instead of photographic then?
It can be. I, we might wanna look at bidding it out altogether, but once we get through this step, then we sit down and we analyze what you want.
I kinda favor, I favor bidding myself, but let's, let's have the discussion.
We just, one second. Pam?
Is there any way that we could possibly check with other vendors to see what the cost would possibly be for the services that haven't been performed? So, we could, I mean, how, how else, how would you come to a financial decision?
The photographing is something that's really strange. I'm not sure how that ended up in the contract. It's just, it's, I, I think it's a cumbersome management tool that's probably pretty ineffective. So, I'm not sure that, yes, their workers are gonna take a picture while they're working, and then somebody's gonna come back. I'm not sure there's a value to that. I've, I've never seen it in any other contract, so I can't pull that out. The silt removal, possibly, I, even that's gonna be difficult.
All right. Cal, may I, after you finish? Pam, are you finished?
So, are we looking at a sizable amount of money when we're saying that they, you know...
Well, I don't think we're looking at $100,000.
I know that.
But if we can, you know, be, I, I really have no idea. I hate to say, I, you know, personally, I think, you know, maybe $5,000 or $10,000 if that, and it's, but hard to say.
Okay.
And it's, they're not talking about coming in and doing a full-blown removal or cleaning. It's just basically maintaining the silt in that area is the way we manage. I, I don't think we're far off from Ed's analysis, but we do feel that there's some obligation there.
Okay, thank you.
Margaret? Here.
Don't, I don't know. Am I the only one that's getting the idea that, number one, we don't really have a contract that really is specific enough? That doesn't break out the specific items? That doesn't have a cost analysis with each one of them? And I think we're...
I'm pretty sure we do.
Having said that, I think that a couple of meetings ago, we wanted actually them to come in front of the board, and we wanted to kind of have a heart-to-heart with them. But I think even before that, I think that somebody's gotta take a look at this agreement, has to break it out into what the real essential parts are, and then come up with a cost analysis for those particular parts, get this issue clear, whether it does or doesn't include silt removal and to what degree, et cetera. And this is an extremely important contract. It appears that we really don't have our ducts properly in a row, and I think that we need to get it that way. Thank you.
If I may, just for clarification, the contract, I just pulled up portions of it. I've not been able to retrieve, retrieve all of it yet. Little system issue here. But it doesn't require the removal. It does require the reporting of the silt accumulation, as Cal indicated. It's very clear and distinct in there. It's supposed to provide that monthly. And I think the, the idea, the photographic reporting was to have some baselines and also have a good historical photographic record as to improvements or no improvements in the, you know, various, the rotic removal, vegetation removal, or other activities.
Mr. Manager, I think, if I may...
I want, I did want to say one thing before you conclude.
Please.
Thank you. On the, on the subject of photographic versus ride-along, I can, listening to Tony, I can see the benefit of photographic, as you've got some evidence. With ride-along, it's not as easy to document what you've seen, and so you can't audit what it was like before, unless you're, unless I'm reading ride-along differently to you. You know, a photograph is, is black and white. You can say, this was or it wasn't. Now, we've done this, this is how we've improved it.
Yeah.
That's the way I see photographic evidence.
But ride-along is with staff, and it's not their ride-or-brown. It'd be ride-around with their onsite manager, and as staff sees that there are problem issues, then they discuss them.
The other, the other item I would raise here is, and I think we talked about it two weeks ago, the subject of littorals. And I know, if we're going to do, and I support Gary's point, I do think we need to revisit this whole contract and, and recraft it. But the subject of littorals is gonna be difficult until, until we have our CDD-wide pond standards document agreed, and that's still in progress. You know, Ed Tinkle's group, Bob Gettler's group, and then those groups getting together, then coming to the board for support for that document in its final form. I don't see how we can construct a lake contractor's contract until we've set our standards.
I, and I agree wholeheartedly. It, I think the board, though, needs to give us some direction. And this week, we had a, an unfortunate situation, in my eyes, probably in other eyes, it isn't unfortunate, but the littorals around the lake were eradicated because of pressure placed on L to get it done. And I, the D.O. says, doesn't require littorals, but the interpretation or the pressure says that you gotta get rid of them. And so she got rid of them. I think the board needs to tell us, if it, if the D.O. doesn't call for them, do you want them removed? I mean, there's a natural process.
Hold on, hold on just a second.
Yeah.
May I?
You ready? Go ahead.
Number one, if this pressure that you're talking about is coming from residents, we need to reinforce with L that she works for you and the operations manager who reports to this board, that she does not take directions specifically from one individual resident. Secondly, this board has voted on at least two occasions that we are going to maintain a 100% littoral planning. Regardless of the fact that I voted against that, it's immaterial, the board in its majority has voted for a 100% littoral planning, and to have one or a group of residents tell L that they're gonna be removed, and they should be removed, is anarchy, and we cannot put up with that.
I agree. I was on vacation, Bill, and I saw the email and shipped off an email immediately, like what you've said, but it was late. So, but they, the littorals around that lake got eradicated.
What lake is this?
Silver Lake.
Two ponds within Silver Lakes.
Silver Lakes was one some months back, and that was in this report regarding the lakes. They came and made an awful loud stench regarding the fact of the condition of their lakes, noticing the fact that in every report that we have on their lakes, there's always been debris, grass clippings, et cetera, all these high-nitrate items that are leading to this. Additionally, the littorals are supposed to cleanse the water. As Bill said, the party that, that employs and that sets the standards realistically is South Florida Water Management, plus then the Gateway CDD. I think I'd have a very strong talk with anybody of staff that decided on their own that they were gonna follow that direction.
I think, I think to try and take this in discussion forward, I, I think we should, I would support Gary's point that we should try and get this, revisit this contract and recraft it, and start the process.
I, I think that is an excellent suggestion, and that that's the way we ought to go, but I think we ought to hear the report from our pond group as far as our standards are before we try and recraft this contract, because I would think that pond standards if, should, should be included, if not literally, at least by reference, in any new contract with Aquagenics or, or any other pond management group.
I, I agree.
Okay, well, we got it on this side. Are you agreeing?
Yeah, but then I wanna know, when is it gonna come? I mean, is this gonna be...
They said November 5th.
We're ready to go right now in Gateway. The only thing we're waiting...
Silver Lake.
Two ponds within Silver Lakes.
Silver Lakes was one some months back, and that was in this report regarding the lakes. They came and made an awful loud stench regarding the fact of the condition of their lakes, noticing the fact that in every report that we have on their lakes, there's always been debris, grass clippings, et cetera, all these high nitrate items that are leading to this. Additionally, the letterals are supposed to cleanse the water. As Bill said, the party that employs and that sets the standards realistically is South Florida Water Management, plus then the Gateway CDD. I think I'd have a very strong talk with anybody of staff that decided on their own that they were going to follow that direction.
I think, I think to try and take this in discussion forward, I, I think we should, I would support Gary's point that we should try and get this, revisit this contract and recraft it and start the process.
I, I think that is an excellent suggestion and that that's the way we ought to go, but I think we ought to hear the report from our pond group as far as our standards are before we try and recraft this contract, because I would think that the pond standards should be included, if not literally, at least by reference, in any new contract with Aquagenics or any other pond management group.
I agree.
Okay, well, we got it on this side. Are you agreeing?
Yeah, but then I want to know, when is it going to come? I mean, is this going to be?
They said November 5th.
We're ready to go right now in Gateway. The only thing we're waiting for is Bob Gettler to get back, and he'll be back tomorrow or Saturday. We're going to try to meet next week and merge their pond documents with our pond documents to come up with a Gateway Pond Documents.
How about the fact, too, I think this issue being as, as strong an issue as it is, can we be sure that we've got, the board has got the materials with as much lead time added as you can give us so that we can really sift through it? Because I think that we're probably going to have a bunch of boxing gloves over some of the items in this issue.
I think that's a good point, and to answer any questions that somebody said, we have, and we've been working on, one section that totally addresses pond maintenance, and we are putting in there the things that exactly I would hope to see in your specifications and your request for proposal, and then get relayed into your contract. While I'm here, let me bring up one other thing, is maybe, maybe you all have forgot it. It's been time, been three years. But you guys spent, and this was before Scott's term, you guys spent an inordinate amount of money on Morris Riley running video cameras through 90% of the sewers in this community. We've got over 1,000 cut sheets and God only knows how many lineal feet of tape showing everything you want to know about silt in your sewers. Why you even have a silt requirement on Aquagenics or any other vendor when you can't go out there with a camera and see beyond the end of your nose? You're not going to see eight feet down where the inverts of these structures are at. You could have four feet of sand down there and you aren't going to know it from the shoreline. But we already have that information from the data that Morris Riley did. The only thing that we've waited on, and we had a discussion, not an argument, a discussion, about this two and a half years ago, and that was, it was so exhaustive of a project. It was identified then, and it's about the same time the roads came along, that we're going to divvy this up into at least multiple phases. Phase one was the road turnover. The county made it clear, no clean sewers, no turnover. So, we're doing that. We've got it identified and out for bid. We had at that time two communities that were in a lot of trouble and identified by the photos, Stony Brook and Silver Lakes. Those two have also been quantified and they're included in the request for proposals, so we're getting those out of the way. However, we've got all of the documents, again, save about 10% of the system that we stopped on because the money was just being spent so high, and it's expensive doing this, and especially when you're doing it in the wintertime when it's underwater. It's very difficult. But we've got all that data on silt accumulation. A great example is the sewer over on Championship Drive that is 100% plugged between the street and the lake. Every time somebody spits on the sidewalk, that's an exaggeration, somebody spits on the sidewalk in Gateway Greens on Championship Drive, we go water curb to curb above the curbs and up in the yards. That's just an example. I can show you numerous cut sheets of what's coming in phase four. Phase one being the roads, phase two being Silver Lakes, phase three being Stony Brook. I wouldn't have Aquagenics doing any of that. It's a waste of money.
Okay. May I?
Please.
Go ahead, Bill. I'll wait on you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ed. I think we've made some real progress this afternoon, and we'll look forward to seeing your report prior to, prior to our meeting on the 5th, okay?
Well, that kind of wait I didn't mean. What I, what I do mean is that place that you just mentioned, for us to not correct that yesterday is just wrong.
The month before.
Gary, there's a lot more like that. There's a lot more than a plug, but you have to figure where the money's coming from.
We can figure out in that particular case where the money's coming from. We got to get it done.
Yeah. Cal, did you have?
The Aquagenics contract, when they inherited that, from what I understand from Gaetos or from Aquagenics, is that Gaetos agreed with them, just like what Ed is saying, that Morris Riley was doing all of this investigation and it was not productive for them to do it, and that's why they weren't required to report all of the silt accumulation. But now we have that information and they can use that as a base and go forward.
We need to go forward in a, in a smart, informed manner, and we'll look forward to seeing your report.
Gaetos didn't have a clue of what we were doing. Not a clue.
Just two other things to follow up on that. One is that Scott wanted to talk a little bit about what had gone on, but I just want to reinforce from the board, no letterals are to be burned out until the pond standard, and you've set some standard in the community. There's no directive and nothing, regardless of what the D.O. says or anything else, just move forward as is address water quality. But we're not going to burn out the letterals.
Again, in addition to that, a letter, a certified letter should be sent to the management of Silver Lakes explaining the fact that this is done through here and not through there with our staff members directly. That should be a certified letter signed by Mr. Guy.
I'm somewhat in the middle of this, guys, and I would strongly urge you to get legal opinion on the ground you're walking on.
Okay, thank you. Margaret has something she wants.
And Ed, I'd just like to comment on the fact that just because the D.O. does not require any letterals doesn't mean you can't have any.
Because they occur naturally.
It's, that's not, you know, the goal is for the lakes to be healthy, and just because the D.O. says they don't require letterals doesn't mean we can't plant them and they shouldn't be there.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we beat this...
Could, could I just say one thing, kind of give a little background?
If he is really adding to the discussion, absolutely, you may say something.
Thank you. Scott Connell, I just want to tell you that the issue with Silver Lakes is, it's my understanding that it's been going on for over two years, that several of the residents want the letterals removed and they have a little different contour to their lakes. They have a shelf. Unlike a lot of the ponds, it just slopes off into the deeper area, and that generates letterals on a natural occurring basis when you have the shallow water. L. has, for the past two years, objected to the removal of those in whole, if you will, and it just got to a point last week that through several people, through the HOA, through lack of support by others, and she just frankly had enough. And, you know, I don't, I know it may be harsh, but I felt she was bullied into that decision.
She was bullied into the decision?
That's my opinion.
By residents?
Yes.
Well, do you think that maybe if you or I or somebody went out to Silver Lakes with her, that she would feel less bullied?
Well, I think by your discussion earlier, I think that item has been addressed.
Well, I certainly hope that message has been received.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I think that's enough of the Aquagenics contract follow-up for this evening. How about 3B, I, I, excuse me, site inspection stormwater plot?
Molly was here and I was hoping that she could briefly summarize or just answer questions if you'd like to move along.
Well, I'd like to move along, but I presume that our members have looked over this and if they have questions, Gary, you want to start?
Yeah, can we start on?
Can we wait till Molly walks in here?
Well, let's, let's get started. I'm sure Molly will be back very shortly. Gary, what page are you?
I'm starting on page nine, and ironically, we start with Silver Lakes. And the first sentence right out of the box says, "Silver Lakes neighborhood had noticeable grass clippings within two of the three ponds consistently." Molly, every report of the Silver Lakes lakes always has this kind of vegetation in it, and we have asked repeatedly to send strong letters to the management at Silver Lakes, letting them know that's unacceptable. They intent, in turn, come in and complain about the condition of their lakes and the algae, and yet they continue to permit this type of high-nitrate stuff to go in there. My questions are a couple-fold. First of all, have we ever sent a letter there? And if you say we did, I'd like to see the receipt for the certified letter.
We haven't sent a letter, to my knowledge, but we have been...
Why not?
There's been emails going back and forth.
Apparently, the emails aren't working.
Right.
And if we keep getting these reports continuously, we can't keep making excuses that we're trying something, but nothing's happening. If we aren't having success, then we come up with something else.
Okay.
And we address the issue upfront. Back to the other thing about L., by the way, I didn't get a chance to mention, but I will mention now since I've got a little bit of opening on the floor. If L. didn't have the backup that she needed, shame on whoever should have been behind her back. Next, when we get to Bristol Park.
Can you, can you hold up just?
For you, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Molly, how many residents are there in Silver Lakes?
I'm not sure about residents, so I'd have to get you the information. I can come back to you.
Can you just give me a just?
There's 175 on the lake.
How many?
175 houses aboard the lake.
175, that's a lot.
And all of them, the two, from what I've been told by the president of the HOA, signed a petition wanting the removal and a court's with the D.O.
Well, I know nothing about a petition. Anybody know anything about a?
It's an email.
Petition?
They did it internally, internally.
An internal petition? Oh, how novel.
Silver Lakes did it on their own. 175, two were opposed to removal and the rest of them were boards, all in accordance with the D.O.
Sounds like we're going to have to have some conversation with Silver Lakes folk. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
No, no, no problem, Gary. So, then it also talks, we're talking about Bristol Park, and nice patches of chara that will top out, et cetera, when water drops will need to be treated, and so when the water drops, who's going to do the treatment, what type of treatment?
Care is an algae, and that would be, Aquagenics would do the treatment. Aquagenics was with us on the ride-along, so he's aware of what needs to be done.
Since we've got you there, the ride-along versus the pictures versus, how about your opinion?
The pictures, only if it's something unusual, would be beneficial for historical information and to watch over time what's happening, but it's similar to cutting your grass. Would you have your lawn care tech go out and take a picture of the grass right before they cut it and then also present you a picture right after they cut it? If they did all that picture-taking and transmitting documentation back and forth, it's going to take up that tech's time. It's more beneficial for that tech to be out there treating vegetation. If they saw something different such as erosion, a different type of plant species coming in, or heavy loading of something, that would be a beneficial picture to take.
The only problem is, is we have no database to show the fact of the rises and the falls. We only have a lot of verbal-type stuff that goes on, and then it gets back and forth of, well, I meant to say this and I meant to say that, and then we get other input, and you never have any numerical quotients.
I don't know that you'll ever have a numerical, but if I took the reports now, I could give you for a year's data, I could tell you what's the majority in your ponds, what ponds are doing, what, what type of species of animals you have out there. Just from going through the reports.
There's a lot of dark and murky in virtue on every one of these things, which doesn't sound real nice.
No, most of them are going to be dark and murky. There's some places where we mentioned that, I know Jeff Key had came in and done his presentation, those types of activities should continue so that you can determine which ponds actually need aerators, circulators, different types of equipment that we can put out there that would help. So, 114 you might treat differently than another lake in Silver Lakes. You might use some type of different equipment to go into those ponds, but it would be beneficial to understand that from the reporting that Jeff Key or somebody like that could provide.
We never seem to get it done, though.
Your lakes are never going to be done. It's an ongoing maintenance task, just like lawn care. If you go back and look at your lawn care maintenance agreement, you're going to see a lot of information in there and the things that you take care of every week, every month, every year. Your lakes are never going to be, we can walk away from this issue. You're always going to have lake maintenance management. You're always going to have a contract to have somebody come in and spray or look at letterals or look at erosion. It will never 100% go away, any of these things.
That's fine, but when you get to a point like number 16 in your report, which is on page 11, where it talks about fresh-cut grass on top of the algae and loaded with organic debris floating against the bank.
Right.
What did we do to correct that?
We can send a letter, but a lot of the things in here, we stopped and talked to people right there.
I know, and every time it says that they greeted you graciously, et cetera, et cetera, and that's, that's refreshing, but the next time we get the report, we get the same thing over and over and over again. So, again, apparently the communication just isn't getting it, and we've talked about it at a number of the meetings, that where the communication really has to go is starting with the management company and let them know that we're really unhappy about it and we're spending a bunch of money on it, and maybe that, though we can't give a fine, we sure as heck could come up with some type of idea of, if you keep costing us extra money and keep costing all the rest of these people extra money, then you're going to have to pony up yourself. There's no reason why the overall Gateway has to pay for people that are constant violators. That's just wrong, and we can go down the entire thing and I won't take up all that time.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Molly, I thought your report was very comprehensive.
All right.
Thank you. Is it, is it also fair to say that our own staff could produce this report if they were asked? Or do we need, do we need the expertise of Molly to do this?
My opinion is a personal opinion, and I think you need the expertise of Molly to do it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say this, I don't want to go down lake by lake. I mean, there's a lot in there and I've read every word of it, and, and I, and I do support some of the points that Gary is making, that, you know, in terms of the resident educational aspect of this and grass clippings and stuff like that, and also resident education with respect to the benefit of letterals. I can see all that. But from, I do want to say this, and I'll say it to you, Bill, directly. I, I don't care for the confrontational thing, you know, the Silver Lakes situation. You know, there's got to be a way in which we can work with the HOA and soften this situation. I just get the sense that this, this is a little confrontational and I don't care for that. There's got to, we've got to work our way through this with the HOA.
I think learning who they are and getting with them face-to-face is going to be a positive tool. This is actually being used with, like, Flavia. She is using this as a tool. So, anything we see out of the ordinary, she's going to know, and she's not going to take it as a confrontation tool, but in her meetings, she can take it, and if a resident does come up, she can explain what's going on. She can use it as a tool to say, the lakes look like this, and help shift that resident population's mindset.
Yes.
Okay, we see it recorded here. We can't just come to the meeting and complain. She has documentation now and it's showing that our lakes are like this. And actually, your Magnolia Lakes area has shifted in mindset. I can go to that community now and not stand on dog waste, but then there's one or two houses that aren't that way. We can report that back to her, and she can use that as a tool. They can't come and complain to her anymore. I think that's the shift that needs to occur.
I don't know, excuse me, I didn't mean to interfere.
With all the HOAs, more so that shift so that we can get with those. We did try that at Silver Lakes. It just didn't work.
Understood, and I know that the Pelican Ponds Group over the last several years has done a really good job interfacing with the residents. We have our own ponds group now starting up in Gateway, and that resident interface, to me, is really important. You know, the actual interface. Lee County themselves, in their regulatory standards, as you know, they've stated that their letteral policy is conditioned by getting some resident input in terms of making sure there's no aesthetic conflicts, and I think we have, I, I feel that we have to consider stuff like that. But, and that's why I wouldn't want to comment on all these ponds until the two ponds groups have got their act together and presented their pond standards to the board, and then we know what we're judging your comments against.
Margaret?
I'm good.
Pam?
I'm fine.
Molly, unless you have more, thank you very much.
Thank you for your report, Molly. Is it good report?
Commander?
It was brought to my attention that some of the people have come in and they don't realize you're actually on the pool. You might want to announce it again just in case somebody's waiting for that, because they were out in the hall, and...
Did you have folks in behind you?
No, they were still, I, I got lucky, my wife behind. There were still a lot of people out there, though. They never got in.
I think the issue was, when, when you released everybody, more people came in, so they didn't realize. Some may not have realized that you released them.
I got it.
I got it.
Ladies and gentlemen, fellow residents, this board, this evening, at its first item, decided by a majority vote that it is making no changes to the pool's rules and regulations and activity. I know some of you, if not all, were concerned about what might happen, and I'm repeating again that the board by majority vote has decided we're not making any changes to the pool in operation. Thank you, Mr. Manager. May we continue? Yes, sir. Thank you. We have a consent agenda, ladies and gentlemen, that's item four. And I'd like for the members to tell us by letter which of the items that they want to discuss.
I just wanna know about 4D, about the utility rate consultant. Looks to me like it's expired.
Four, 4D, you say?
Yeah.
Okay, Rodney.
4D and 4E.
D and E. Margaret?
D.
Is it boy or?
D as in dog.
Ah, okay. Pam?
Everything that I've wanted to D is, so, good.
All right, let's...
Actually, Andy, I was looking at my notes.
Okay, yeah, okay. Let's, then let's, let's proceed to 4D, the contract spreadsheet that starts on page thirty-five, I believe, and Rod, you were supposed to mention it, so why don't you help us along? What, you have the best to mention for the?
I'm Sergio Ketchum.
No, actually, I'm not.
I'm sure you'll catch it.
Gary, I defer to you, please.
All I'm asking, I only have one to ask, 'cause I'm sure that Rod and Margaret will catch everything else, just about Burton Associates. It looks to me, maybe I'm wrong, that the relationship expired? Or did it just auto restart or something? Am I wrong?
That was an auto.
Auto renewal. It's auto renewal. So in other words, since January, we have been paying them? Is that the case?
Just as needed.
Okay. That's nice to clarify, because some of these things to the public might look like these guys are still paying them, but what are they getting in return? Now, we'll just take everything.
Thank you. Page thirty-six, please. We, this is with respect to the Gateway Soccer Complex. There are two contracts out there which expire mid-November, Scott. And just to recap, our budget for 2016, to maintain that soccer complex is over $200,000. And over the next five years, we are, at least until recently, planning to replace floodlights to the tune of $79,000 a year for the next five years, which is a huge expense. I'm concerned about it. These contracts, there are only two major users, that's the Gateway Soccer Association and the Flag Football, and we're, we are receiving from those organizations around $20,000 in total. And there is a user fee attached to that complex, of course, but that doesn't come to us, except for this. So my suggestion would be, can we, can we get the organizers of those two associations to come and talk to us about this before November the fifteenth hits? I think it's important that we have a full and frank discussion as to exactly who's using these fields. I understand that forty percent of the soccer users don't live in Gateway. So there's a lot to talk about, and I don't wanna get into it today, but I would welcome some discussion.
Is that all?
That's 4D. The other item is, is a small one, on page forty-one. This is to do with four items off the bottom on page forty-one.
I'm sorry, with what, please?
Page forty-one.
Yes, I have that.
Four items, IP services, Windstream. We'll be getting into that on item five B today, but it's just that there is an auto renewal going on of fiber optics, and this, I want to have the discussion later in the, in the agenda about the possibility of going wireless to connect the soccer complex and the pool. So those are the points I wanted to make.
Margaret?
I, my question was on page thirty-eight. We've got the short and long-term disability that looks like it had expired, and then on forty-one, the same thing, the cell phones and waste management, those contracts have been, they expired September thirty?
I received word today from Severn Trent, from Paula Davis, that the Hartford was renewed in time.
Okay.
But not prior to me putting this in the book last week.
Okay.
And the waste management is a, is a rollover, as well as the cell phones are basically a month a month.
Okay.
Okay.
So does that mean that these will change on a monthly basis in our books, that those dates will update, so we're not looking at past due expiration dates?
I'll address that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Basically, all my questions have been answered.
Fine. Scott, Al, is there any reason why you cannot invite the managers of the two soccer groups to meet with the board on the fifth?
I, there, I can imagine that they will be available, they are working gentlemen, but I'll invite them.
Will you invite them?
Absolutely.
And ask them to bring with them a summary of the youngsters who are participating in the, in the programs? I'm not sure I wanna get into the residents of, the residents of those youngsters, but I'd like to know how many young people are participating, and how many adult advisors and coaches are participating. From what I've seen personally, at least on Saturday afternoon or Saturday morning, there is a will of a lot of young people involved and appreciating the use of the fields. Would you please invite them?
Will do.
Does that satisfy you?
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item?
4E. We didn't do E yet.
I'm sorry.
Then I'll, then I'll give you your motion.
Can I jump in on 4E?
Yes.
Was that just me, or were there others?
I think it was just you.
Okay, Scott, I'll address you on a couple of these. These really are administrative things. I do respect and enjoy reading this format.
It's a lot easier, isn't it?
It is, but, you know, I think it's important that we, the numbers are right. And page forty-three, here's, here's a few suggestions, please, if you would take them as read. Page forty-three, we've got two different items called meter replacement program, and I've been reading through all these, and it's, I would, it would be better if one was a pilot and one was the rollout.
Correct, that will be modified.
Thank you. That's the first thing. Page forty-four, at the top there, we're talking about the under contract amount for the irrigation systems of high-service pumps. It seems very muddled up there in that box, and I really can't quite make out a tale of what was spent and what was, who was spending it on. Is that seventy-nine thousand? We've got a figure of $79,000 at the top there, and then twenty-six to forty-two. So I'm just asking if it can be more readily apparent.
Yes, we'll clean that up, and...
It just needs cleaning up.
Yeah, and also, at the last meeting, similar issues were brought up, and I've spent the last hour prior to the meeting working with Stephen, Yvonne and I, to make sure that all of our numbers are in sync with what they are reporting. So I will be getting my numbers through him, or from him, to include in this report, and we've discussed this.
I don't, I don't wanna dwell on it, but I do wanna just cover a few items while, while we're talking on this. The middle item on page forty-four, stormwater system, the contracted amount, the way, we had a meeting, I think it was two or four weeks ago, where there was $126,000 contract amount that was approved by the board, right? And we were saying, we were saying, why couldn't we get more bids? We only got two. I think it was, bids were Sewer Bureau and Extreme Golf Course, right?
Yes.
Anyway, the board did approve it on September seventeenth, though, but that presumably should go under, in the second box there, the date of approval. Yes?
I agree.
And, and the hundred and twenty-six thousand contract amount should therefore go in there. So what is the significance of the $600,000 figure in the budget, then? How does that stack up against the one twenty-six we've contracted? What's missing?
I believe it's, the $600,000 was a line item under the capital improvement project.
Yeah.
Of available or earmarked funds for that, and this, the hundred and twenty-six thousand is just the first phase.
It's just a piece of it, so there's more to come?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. On the bottom item on page forty-four, there is a change order missing on the fourth box. Change, where is change order number one? And the change order number four was that credit with the transposition error, if you remember, two weeks ago. That, the change number four and one are missing from that fourth box, if you would look at that.
We'll update that, yep.
Thanks.
We, between the last meeting and the time we issued this, which was by Tuesday at 5:00 PM, we're concentrating on the format to make it more readable than the long newspaper column on the far right side. And I give the credit, the idea to Stephen, and then Diane and I, Diane took it upon herself, and then her computer crashed, so I was, anyway, here we are, and we, I understand your comments, thank you.
The very last point, Scott, I've got some more, but I'm only gonna pick, pick one of them out, 'cause I know you're working on it. Page forty-six. Lake Bank Restoration is such a huge project for us, it's top of the pops in terms of spending, and I, I'm just, I don't, I think it might warrant a box per lake, as opposed to a crowd of lakes in one box, and then trying to fathom out what we spent on each of them all, and try to separate it all is quite difficult. I spent quite a time on that yesterday. How about, because of the importance of it, we have a box per lake? And we say, what was, what was the amount for Lake Eighty-seven? What have we budgeted for Eighty-seven? What have we contracted for Eighty-seven? And what have, you know, it will be easy to follow.
I, I, first blush is, I think we might wanna create a whole separate report for the lake banks.
Okay.
If you want it, pond by pond.
Okay.
Instead of incorporating it with this project tracking, we'll have a separate chapter and verse.
I mean, the format's great, it's just that the, the figures just are not easy to read, we've gotta think about that.
And I haven't verified it with Stephen yet, but we're working on it.
Thanks a lot, Scott.
Okay.
Understood. Sure.
May I have a motion?
I just have two quick. I had the also, sorry. On page fifty, the erosion washout, it's got on hold pending budget availability. Since we're in the new budget year, are we at a place where we can start working on these washouts? Or I'm, or are we going to be ready, I guess I should say? 'Cause I know the water levels have to go down. Are we at a place where we're ready?
The washout for the new budget year.
The...
Okay. Again, this hasn't been, it's all part of our lake bank restoration, and the PowerPoint and presentation, I think, that's coming from Tetra Tech, and this is identified projects that have not been, obviously, moved forward for the board's approval yet.
Okay.
Until we do our homework.
And the, the second to the last one is the Lake Eighty-seven restoration, and this one still identifies land shore as the company doing the work, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And now I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 4A through 4E.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second?
May I have a second, any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Five, zero, motions carried. We are ready for business items five, starting with A, the truck purchase. Scott, I'm sure you are ready to talk to us about this.
Yes, this is a carryover from our last meeting, and again, I present this before you, I've included, and I've updated the justification sheet, which is on page fifty-five, as well as I've included page fifty-six, which sort of identifies the number of staff, the departments that are using the existing vehicles, and that would be using the proposed vehicle. We still feel that the, a pickup truck, two-wheel-drive pickup truck, is the vehicle for this identified use and sharing amongst the other departments. And I did additional research, again, checking, you know, prices with other dealers and things, and we're still $778 below another fleet dealership and, from Sebring and things, so...
May I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So move.
May I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. There's a conversation.
Yep.
Please.
How did you come up with these percentages? What was the mathematical base you used? You're talking about fifty-six, I do this.
Page fifty-six. By reviewing with, with staff, and there's no hour meter or anything else, it's, it's observation and...
So, so we don't keep daily logs on each one of the vehicles and every trip and all that stuff?
No, we do not.
Why?
Can't answer that. I, not that it's ever been taken, to my knowledge here, and that doesn't mean it doesn't have to be, but it was never done, that's all.
So we don't know if a truck finishes at the end of the day, and the next day, we can't ever check things like mileage, et cetera, or who's using it, and we have really no database for that?
No recorded database.
Okay.
Any other conversation?
Well, why don't we implement a...
I think that'd be a great idea.
You know, I think that in the future, you can look at it two ways, you can look at it as kind of keeping track of the workers, but it helps you to keep track of your equipment and what you're getting out of it, you know? So in a way, if you're doing, if you're working with drivers, it is kind, it is good to have a log that keeps track of mileage and usage.
I don't know that you need to do it on a, on a daily basis, but at least on a monthly basis, you ought to record the, the mileage and the amount of fuel that's been used.
Well, usually it's kept in the truck, and it's just something that someone can write. You know, they can just fill out the mileage when they finish.
And all they need is, they certainly have a laptop capability that they can input this type of data, and when they come up with the next vehicle, because this district is only gonna grow, we've got more houses, et cetera, that are coming in, we should know this kind of data. I mean, when I was a teenager and I was working for a dairy, and we had dairy trucks, we knew every truck, every day, who rode it, who drove it, how much gas went into it, et cetera. This data is nothing more than just verbal, throw some numbers at something and make it justified.
We'll hold a minute.
Pardon?
We will implement a program.
Right, right.
Yes, thank you, Scott. Budget, the budget, the budget for this is thirty-five, did you say, in next year's budget?
Not, not to exceed.
Yeah, thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's the budget, yes.
Yeah, and, and how much is that? Is that split between enterprise fund and general?
Yeah, down below it says, the general fund, ten thousand five hundred, enterprise fund, twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Yeah, okay, good. I'm glad that it's biased towards the enterprise fund, 'cause we're a little less pressured there. We can't put it all in enterprise fund, could we?
I'll defer.
Could we allocate the vehicle to a utility, to the enterprise fund?
If you got justification. If you can make a justification that the majority of the use is for the enterprise fund, then sure.
I'll leave that up to the district. I'll leave that up to the district. I, I just, you know where I'm going. I'd rather try and load this onto the enterprise fund as much as we can.
Uh, the other, the other thing that I've seen, you know, districts and municipalities do is kinda like a, a hand-me-down system where the utility fund or the enterprise fund will get the new vehicles and then some of the older vehicles get, go to, to a general fund.
That's where I'm heading.
Yeah. So that's kind of, you know...
If we can do something like that and find a way to allocate this to the enterprise fund, I think we'd be better off.
Well, you, you, your, uh, idea is, is well taken, except we have on the record this evening that this vehicle's gonna be used seventy percent for the recreation department.
Well, that certainly, since these were estimated, as was verbally stated, we could certainly have them look for something as more accurate data.
Thank you.
That is an excellent suggestion.
Just tell them the recreation department can't use this new truck.
Margaret, we've never said that. This is a share, this is team effort.
Scott, excuse me, I, I did wanna ask a couple more questions. Uh, are our vehicles, what's the, what's the policy about staff taking vehicles home?
Currently, and, and in the past, those who are on call can take the vehicle home so that when they do get that emergency call for a utility item, they can respond and don't have to come back to the yard, open up the office, get the keys and waste another fifteen, twenty minutes.
So do you, have you designated which members of staff are permitted to take a vehicle home and which are not? How does it work?
Yes, those who are on call. And we have a rotating call list.
So this, this, the new rec manager that's driven this request, right?
Yes.
And is, is he one of the designated ones who is allowed to take it home?
Currently, he is not a designated on-call utility person.
Okay. Thank you. So I want you to answer.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, may I have a vote on the recommendation?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye, aye, aye. We've got five to zero. Thank you very much. Uh, the next is B, the audiovisual upgrades, uh, for which, uh, I'm gonna turn to Mr. Senior. But before that, uh, the board's gonna stand and recess for ten minutes.